If what pleads goodbye in the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no agenda adjustments. And I'll entertain motion to accept the full sets of minutes for January 15.
I'll make the motion second.
We have Nalwell and Yanover, all those in favor?
I think.
You think? Whitman, extension is a little six.
Backup, I have to obtain two.
Oh, okay. We have two extensions.
Any new second?
Ronan.
Wait.
Second, okay. So, two extensions. And although the student advisor advisory council, favor?
Well, for February, we just finished passing out our Valentine's Day flowers, which was kind of a way of for students to send flowers and like happy Valentine's Day cards to other students and teachers. And coming up in March, we're working on real festive spring little presents, souvenir presents for a lot of the students, just kind of break March up because we got MCAS going on, there's not a lot of vacations, so we just wanted to give the students like a little little break. And then April, we have the town show coming up, which is in full swing, the posters are going up soon. We have all the the signups and the acts and working on getting those down. And then in May, we're working on a run for epilepsy. We're gonna raise some money to go to the epilepsy foundation, like one of the girls, Kylie Vanster, is trying to raise money for it because she had a case of a thing.
Thank you. And our report, Treasury report.
Good evening. We have the red motif with Treasury, one in memory of Valentine's Day and picture of the President in memory of President's Day. Let's look at page one, the summary of our financial position. As you know, we have $1.7 million invested and for the month, I made $231. So, I mean, it's not very exciting to have a rate that continues to stay about the same for not to do no movement. I mean, I have a million four earning 18 basis points. Any questions on something about financial position? Okay, the next page is about revenue. And the month of January, I somehow neglected to work on non-revenue tuition, I did do it in July, that's $150,000 that will bring in, we collected last year and will bring in this year. And again, chapter 78 keeps coming in one twelfth at a time. And that was the only revenue of certificates in the month of January. Everybody have any question on that? Over to the expenditure page. Item two, workers' comp. Again, I got a surprising adjustment to the workers' comp. So, we have a $27,000 payable variance that should not go away, and hopefully the mayor will figure out how to use that. Unemployment payments, number three, still has $19,000 in it. We have a couple of people that we're disputing and we're trying to get it resolved. They are collecting and I have not reimbursed unemployment parts, so that 18,000 can go away real quick if they validate the claim of their benefit. Item eight, utilities. Even with a tough winter, I still think we're gonna have about $25,000 variance there, payable variance at this point. Item 12, legal and audit, we're just not spending at the level we did last year, so we have $65,000 remaining in that account. That's also professional fees on one entire revenue, we have an actuary this spring, what I knew, other post-employment benefit liability, we haven't done it in three years. So, the five million may become seven. Item 15, health insurance, I believe we're still right on budget with that. Item 16, pupil transportation. Because of the cost of diesel fuel and a number of other factors, I believe I'm gonna be short on $50,000 on that line when I get to the end of the year. And some of the favorable items I discussed earlier would probably be used to cover it. Item 23, books, instructional supplies. There's only five months left in the fiscal year, and we've still only spent 52% of that. There's still 48% remaining. Again, I don't know why this happens every year, but it always gets spent at the end, and I believe it should be spent upfront. Item 25, shop supplies, and we've spent 74% of that, which is the way it should be. So, I'm pretty pleased with that category. The only other special needs, item 32, I'm watching it very closely. We only have about $20,000 left for the rest of the year. I'm not sure it's gonna make it, but keep watching it closely. Any questions or any other?
Yes, well, what would you need to carry it over?
I don't know yet. Special needs?
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm right on, I just sense it's gonna hold a little bit on the bottom line. The biggest expense we have in there, we have an outplacement, and that's covered. IEPs, we have stuff to do, just keep an eye on it, just looks tight to me. Okay, moving on to page four, which are pie charts for the month of January. Again, on the expenditures, the bottom part, you can see the largest piece, the Kelly Green pie chart, are the general expenses, but it is diminishing, and as the year goes on, it will diminish, because most of those expenditures we make in July. And the final page is the year-to-date pie charts, which are all representative of what we're on. In revenue, you can see that the Kelly Green pie chart indicates that most of our revenue comes from the communities. And now the law on the expenditures, the Kelly Green pie chart piece that apply indicates that most of our expenses are for salaries. Are there any questions? All right, now, Mr. Chairman, can I talk about the budget transfer? Right here. We have a budget transfer, I'm gonna use part of that work as a liability, 8,700 of it to fund. We have an issue with, we bought some new printers, and they have a maintenance contract that if we go over so many copies, we have to pay a surcharge. And we use what we thought we were making prior to when it was present, and apparently we have exceeded the number of copies, and put that budget line at over $5,100. So, I need to transfer that to make it even. The next line item, we are going through a new...
Based on the last, your last day call.
Student information system. And they're experiencing difficulties in getting a call, we had to spend a little money when they fought. So, that's the $3,600 that we need. Anybody have any questions on that?
No, I'll make the motion to transfer anyway.
Is that the Treasury's report, Yanover budget transfer?
Yes.
Second by Yanover. All those in favor? You can answer.
Well, I can, or I can give it on later, depending on what you want, Mr. Chairman. I have, yeah, I have copies of the assessments we've talked about.
Okay, we'll take it up when the committee's finished. Okay, now, Chairman, as far as subcommittee reports, the Treasury, Secretary of Search Committee just met prior to this meeting, and will be conducting interviews April 8 and April 10, I think. So, I'll report back to you next month on my progress. Now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a brief report for the committee this evening. First off, document five in your packet, we finished our exploratory program for our current freshman class, and I wanted to share with you where the students in the freshman class ended up. A couple of items I would just point out to you. First of all, I'm very pleased with the auto body enrollment with the current freshman class, it was, the enrollment was low last year. I think the teachers have done an admirable job in making adjustments, and it's reflected in the student interest. And I'd also point out to you that you'll notice on a few lines where it says Engineering Academy dash drafting electronics and PMT. You may have recall from past meetings, both myself and Margaret have commented on that we're starting a new curriculum initiative that we're calling Engineering Academy, where we're going to give students that expressed an initial interest in those three programs a common integrated foundation of a curriculum that will take them through the second half of ninth grade and for a portion of sophomore year. The teachers are working right now on that integrated curriculum, so the students in this academy will begin to see the connections between those programs, develop, you know, expand their experiences and interests. And then by the time the second half of sophomore year, they will then go into one of the defined programs. This also gives us an opportunity. First of all, I'm pleased with the, I'm pleased with the numbers, there is still space in the Engineering Academy, and that is one of the areas that I'll be talking with our administrators after the break, in terms of reaching out, letting the communities know that if there are, if there was space for 10th graders for next school year, we want to let the community know. And I think showing what an Engineering Academy can do will, may attract some candidates. Overall, very pleased with how the program went for this half, first half of the school year. The other two items, MABA officer update, I mentioned in my comments to you that I will be serving as the president of MABA next year. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. Being a MABA officer offers me a window into what a lot of our sister regional schools are doing, and there are a lot of state initiatives going on, and one of my priorities is making sure that the Department of Education is aware that if they are developing initiatives, policies, regulations, et cetera, that the career in tech ed vocational community is remembered. And so, I'll be serving in that role starting in July, that was, that happened at the border of the meeting last month. And also, under item three, I'm pleased to report that we hosted the Board of Edu, the State Board of Education Vocational Technical Advisory Council on February 6. That was, it was a great opportunity to bring administrators, parents, and members of industry from around the state. This is an advisory council that meets four times a year, and I was pleased to be able to host them, and our folks did a nice job. And while I don't have it listed here, just another civic event, on March 3, we're also gonna be hosting a session of the Joint Ways and Means Committee. Senator Kennedy of Brockton reached out to Margaret, his staff reached out last month. And so, we're gonna be hosting a public meeting on March 3. They have a set of genders to what they're gonna talk about, it's not vocational technical education, but they will, they like to host, they like to have regional meetings, and so staffers and Margaret's office are working on logistics, that'll be March 3. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Budget certification. Are there any questions? I don't know whether anybody would like to see your assessments, again, depending where you are. I have extra copies.
Mr. Chairman, I just remind the committee that we need six votes to go forward with this budget. We don't have six, the budget doesn't go forward, we need six. Seven here.
Okay, these are preliminary assessments.
Right, these are things done based upon the governor's budget at this point, could change, my best guess as to what the assessment per town is going to be.
Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do, and I speak.
Absolutely.
Okay, Tom, you and I talked, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I'm glad to be waiting till tonight, so everyone can speak their piece. Women's, although women's student enrollment is one of 14 students, that's a very huge amount. Our assessment is going up, it's on 208, estimate is preliminary assessment based on the governor's budget of $208,850. That's a huge increase. Next week, we'll be meeting with the pinpoint, 25th, that's right. Bring the chest protectors. I think it's gonna be a hot sell, right? The last, not last meeting, because I wasn't here for the meeting before, that I asked if in fact, we looked at the budget without touching the educational portion of the budget, because I don't believe in that. If we were to look at other areas that we can cut something out of the budget to lower the assessment, how much of an effect would it have on the, as far as the assessments? Probably not a lot, because I'm looking, I'm looking at some of the items that you and I talked about, and even if you were to cut all that, it may mean very small amount of money lowering each town. But I'd like just for people who may be watching in the press, about what effect, what little effect it would have for it, okay?
So, Mr. Chairman, yeah, that's a, that's certainly a fair question. I think the easiest example I could give would be to just talk about capital for a moment. Capital, capital is assessed to each town based on a three-year rolling average of enrollment. And in this, in this budget proposal, there is $250,000 of capital, as I laid out to you in previous presentations. So, Dan, using that as an example.
Right, that would, that would be the biggest chunk, because we have, what, 500, what's our increase in budget, 500 what?
The total budget increase is 523,000.
So, you're talking about little, almost half, almost half our increase.
Almost half of this in capital. So, a simple way of doing that math, if I just use Whitman as the example, Whitman's three-year rolling average is in the vicinity of 17%. So, Whitman's population in this school district over the last three years is about 17%. So, if you pick a...
Closer to 18.
Closer to 18. If you pick a number that we would cut, Whitman's savings would be 18% of that number. So, if we cut $100,000 out of capital off the total bottom line budget, Whitman's savings would be 18,000.
You know, I have to look at this, and I have to say, this is probably the worst scenario we can have, it's gotta get better if, I've talked to Jeff Deal, State Rep, Josh Papler, both of them saying that they've got, they've got to put some money back into this. At the educational conference, I screamed and yelled about unfunded mandates and embarrassed some people, but I don't care, that's my style. But we have to look at a way of cutting down the cost of education in ways that, I messed up, you know, it's the cost. And the unfunded mandates are one of them, that the state tells us to do, we have to do it, find a way to pay for it, wrong. That's very, very difficult for us to do. But that being said, I've talked to both of them, and I'm saying, you've gotta come up with more money, which that's seven, and for transportation. And it's always, well, we'll have to see what we can do. They're saying that revenues are coming, more revenues are coming into the state than they expected, so I'm saying, so what's the problem? You know, your priorities should be education, but that's just me screaming.
Mr. Chairman, from Bob's, from Bob's earlier comment, the governor's budget, after all, and after I would talk of revenue, improved revenue forecast, our chapter 70 money was nearly, it was the same.
It was a couple thousand dollars more, okay. Do you, do you see it plausible to cut anything out of the budget that would lower, whatever in education, some of these assessments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, certainly, I would, I would be very reluctant to want to do that, but to answer your question candidly, Dan, if I had to prioritize where I would look first, I would look, I would look at capital. I would look at the, the projects that I'm gearing ourselves towards for next year in anticipation of some NEAS recommendations on space. So, if I had to, if I had to recommend cuts, that is the place that I would, I would look first. And as you indicated, I would be reluctant to go, I would certainly not put what I would call core services, that is direct education to students, anywhere near that.
Because 95% of the increase in Whitman's budget is the enrollment?
I, Mr. Chairman, Dan, I think that, I think that there's no way of, there's no way of overlooking the fact that our, our total in-district enrollment is up, and as you said at the beginning of your remarks, that Whitman's enrollment being up 14 students, combined with Whitman's enrollment being down in the Whitman Antion Regional School District, that's just, that just speaks to a variety of factors, that, that as of this fiscal year coming up, the percentage of students from Whitman and South Shore is a slightly larger percentage, and that has ripple effects, you know, in the formula. No getting around a 14-student increase, one of the single biggest increases I, in my recent memory.
That is what it is, okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I want to change the motion, and we accept this budget 2015.
I'll make the motion.
Yanover, second. Yanover, second. Brockman?
Yes.
Situ, yes?
Yes.
Well, it doesn't make any difference, I'll make it a yes, even though I know it can be a hot sell, just a mention again is, you know, to upset, we will discuss it next week, so.
Okay, hundred percent. Okay, new business. Okay, the first item is the proposed electrical partnership with the town of Situate, and we have PDWA director, I think it is, to make reorganization.
Actually, the recently former PDWA director, passed that responsibility on to a younger person that we recruited and have developed, and now I'm passing it on as a, on my special projects, one day with two of you as my name. The, I'm gonna hand out some material here, I think, because it's a slightly modified version of what I gave you, if you take one of each and pass it around, it'd be good. The big thick thing is just a backup sheet in case we need to refer to it. As you know, the Commonwealth over the last few years, Governor Patrick's agenda has been to develop renewable energy, stated as, and has put forth and passed legislation, policies, and regulations that encourage the implementation of renewable energy sources, wind, solar, now it looks like biodegradable garbage, that sort of thing. So, he's enabled something that we've done in Situate over the past 22 months, which is we've installed a wind turbine, a one and a half megawatt wind turbine, and a three-megawatt solar array on our landfill. This is the solar array on the landfill. Nice flat top landfill, we were blessed for that, and here is the wind turbine in the, in the distance. Can see that? And we're the host community, by definition of the mass log related to what's called net metering. Net metering means that we can put in a site such as a solar array, and there's no consumption of electricity at the landfill, very little at the adjacent transfer station, so all of the electricity from the solar array goes onto the national grid lines, and National Grid then does, virtually distributes it to us. So, basically, they give us credit for what is produced, at, basically, retail electricity rates, and then we in turn end up paying the private developer that we made arrangements with to build the solar array, and what we're paying him is less than what National Grid is paying us, so we benefit from that. We're able to do that to the extent that we are consuming in all of our municipal operations, our high schools, our streetlights, sewer plant, water plant, town hall, to the extent that we're consuming electricity, National Grid will give us credit for electricity that we produce, so we're not by law allowed to produce more than we use. We can, they'll take it, they just won't pay for it. So, we're expecting that the output of this solar array, which started up in September, and it's functioning very well, combined with the, the wind turbine, which has been running now for about two years, will exceed our electricity consumption, because we continue to invest in ways to reduce total energy of all of our facilities anyway, okay? Which is another good thing to be doing. So, this, these two will generate around 7 million kilowatt-hours a year, and we think this will exceed our consumption by as much as a million kilowatt-hours a year. So, what we're doing is we've gone to several communities and have had some interest from them, we've had the most immediate interest from Dr. Pique and Mr. Kelly, and bring it to your board and discuss it, because you are a very attractive energy consumer for, for this program. What we're offering is, we want to share this electricity with you, we would partner with you, form a contract arrangement with you, and sell you the electricity, yep, I'm getting ahead of myself, it's okay. So, what would happen is, you would partner with us, and then we would put your two large meters onto what's called our Schedule Z with National Grid, National Grid would then, and then we would allocate 25% of the output of the solar array to your meters. This would almost equal all of your electricity. This would amount to about 780 megawatts, 780 million kilowatt-hours of electricity per year, and your usage is around 900 million kilowatt, thousand, 900,000, yeah, 900...
Thousand kilowatt.
Yeah, thousand kilowatt, yeah. Yeah, but millions and thousands makes up, and I'm an electrical engineer. But I don't usually speak in those kind of big numbers. So, what would happen is then, on your electric bills, you would get a 14 cent, 13, 14 cent credit from National Grid for everything, for 25% of what this produces. So, you would receive this 14 cent credit directly on your energy bill, and then what you would do is, you would pay us, town of Situate, nine cents for that electricity, and nine cents represents like a half a penny more than we're paying the developer for the use of this site here, okay? The result would be, what we would do is, we put this agreement in place, it would run through September 16, September of 2016, with a contract, a contract would have clauses in it where either party could, with some notice, cancel the contract, get out of it, you know, so it's binding in the sense that's the arrangement between us, but it's cancelable at some time in the future. In 2016, both parties would then sit down again and say who was working, and look to extend it or not extend it. Our rates that we paid the developer for the electricity producer escalate every three years, so at that time, we'd have to discuss how the rate will be. I've included in that big thick package that I gave you, full disclosure, it includes what our rates are, it includes a potential contract that we would enter into together, and on this page, it discloses all the information about what the solar array will produce each month, what your share would be, what credit you would receive from National Grid, what you would pay to the town of Situate, and the net savings for the South Shore Vocational Technical School, which amounts to around $31,000 a year. Your current electric bills run around $100,000 a year, so this would lower them by $31,000. lower them by $31,000. And we're not a private developer trying to sell you something, we're just another town, don't want to waste this electricity. We are of course, with Jack and the board here, we are, we are a member, a community with a vocational school and we're very interested in doing things that, as, uh, Chris Savucci is, uh, helping lower your costs. We think this is a good opportunity for us to avoid wasting renewable energy, uh, that we're, um, producing and an opportunity for the school to pick up some savings. So that's kind of where I am, I'd like to answer your questions.
You have another question? How long, we have a three-year contract, can we write this?
Um, three years.
Three years.
You can do two years. I just pulled three years out of the air. I think the selectmen can only commit, our town can only commit to a three-year arrangement, um, at any given time.
Then that's to say, we, we say we commit to a three-year contract, contracts come in, we negotiate for another three years?
Yes.
As long as we, we negotiate and everybody's on the same way?
Yeah, right, right. And, you know, and, and in the course of it, if we need to tune it, we would tune it too. Because it's, we're all buddies in a sense, maybe it's not like, um, it can't be the, this page right here shows what our rate, what we're paying, uh, the developer in our In year, uh, through, through 9, 6, through September 2016, we're paying 8.4 cents a kilowatt hour. So if you were paying us nine cents, that means, you know, in the course of a year, we'd make about $5,000 on it, which kind of covers our administrative costs and all the rest of the year. The next year it goes up 8.9 cents, so it's not like it escalates at, at a huge amount. So over three years, at the end of three years, it goes up a half a cent for us. And then after that, it goes up six tenths of a cent for the next three years. So it's a pretty gentle contract. We also have in our contract with the developer, um, we have a, uh, minimum production clause, so if they don't produce enough, they have to pay for the cost of electricity that we have to buy.
For our maintenance, the, the maintenance is all covered by your contract?
Oh, totally. We have, uh, the, our total investment in this is about $11,000 and our ongoing cost is, my time, I think, not that much.
On that, uh, I know you're having problems with, uh, flicker and shadow and all that stuff, uh, would be, we'd be non liable for any of that stuff if it gets shut down?
Yes, that's why the focus is on the solar array, okay? So that's why I say 25% of the output is solar array, okay? And one of the selectmen the other day asked me, he said, uh, said something about the, is, is the solar array running today? And I said, yes. And he said, well, gee, I don't hear anything. Meaning he does pretty complaints.
I have a question. All the energy that that produces, it produces more than what the town typically uses up?
Yes.
All the tools, the place to buy, to buy from, the entire town's government produces more?
Yes.
Okay, and you don't react?
Lights, water, water.
Yeah. Wow.
And, and national grid won't give you a credit balance? Uh, they give us a credit, but I think it's more, it drops down to wholesale rates, like four, five, six, eight, that's, you know, it might, it'd probably cover our costs, but it, it's, again, you know, what happened?
What, okay, what happens in future needs if in fact, um, Situate builds something new or lodges something or whatever and you need more energy, which is less energy you could sell to us, I mean?
Yeah, we'd have to come back and talk. I mean, it'd be just like this kind of conversation again.
But still, it wouldn't win for us because, whatever we have, whatever we have, we gain extra money, so.
So you're still paying for electricity, you're just paying nine cents for it instead of 14 cents. And so energy saving projects do have a payout still, you know, at, at a nine cent. Right now, um, we're, uh, actually right now, I was using the number 13 and 14 cents, but right now, national grid is billing, is crediting us, uh, 17 cents. In fact, I think of the last, I may have included, actually, but, no, I didn't, I didn't have any. You know, they're crediting us right now, uh, 17 cents a hour because of winter rates or the winter.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's the national grid. Right, so you see, that's, that's how the credit looks. We have a second page, right, second page. So here's what we get every month, ZIB of two, it's called. So right now, we're running a credit balance of $91,000 on this, uh, solar array now. Last month, they credited us $18,000 at 17 cents kilowatt hour. You get that same credit. This, the same credit shows up, your bill will, you know, Bob gave me your bills, you just have a line on it and it's the credit for renewable energy.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's pretty transparent. I mean, you'd see it.
Sounds very similar.
Sorry?
Sounds like a very simple system, boys, where?
Yeah, I think so.
I like your energy usage on that bill there.
Yeah, yeah.
So something's pretty low in it, yeah.
Yeah, I like you, mom, too.
Yeah.
My, my house bill doesn't look like that.
Any other questions?
No, um, I just, I think, uh, we're going to have our council get together with their council and sort of, uh, put a little package together we can review and.
No, that was our recommendation, you want to go forward with it.
Yeah, I think we, it's worth looking into, that's the way I feel. So it's, uh.
Pending that.
Yeah.
Working on the details, I guess.
I think if, uh, Tom contacts, uh, Laura or whoever over there, uh, set up something we can look at it. You know, no guarantees, but it's, give us some factual.
I think what we have, you know, you know, to work out the commercial agreements and then the others, work on the legal basis, so. I have a contract I included in here is from, uh, another town did this in Western Mass, so I just cobbled theirs up to put our names in on it, but we would have to have, uh, town that's the name of ours as an association. Say it, Tom.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we get a two for it.
Yeah, right. No, it doesn't work that way.
Oh, getting nine cents there.
Mr. Chairman, you want to have a vote or? Yeah, we're going to have a vote.
I'll make a motion, we move forward with, uh, investigating with, uh, with the council. The workings of the project.
Right. We have a second.
I'll second.
Wait a minute, we'll second.
Can we say most of the papers?
Yeah. So it's pending. Working on the details.
Thank you. I look forward to working on the details.
True.
Maybe I catch you in Boston, maybe we pull it. Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a, uh, surplus declaration for the math department? I'd ask for a motion on that, please.
I guess they're going to be voting. Can I have a, please, uh? Second Cohasset, a little in favor?
A first month review of a textbook for computer information, tech department can, uh, can tell if computer literacy is there, so there will be action to be taken.
Okay, moving along, we have warrants, is there any warrants?
Yep.
Mr. Baye?
Okay, warrants. Warrants for approval, warrants 14 and 15, total 879,939.21 cents.
Second amendment, a little in favor?
I want a picture of you with the winner.
Before we turn to our next, the assessment will go tomorrow to our eight towns, the mail amounts to the selectmen, the treasurers and town councils. I'm sorry, the FedCon, the treasurer, the town council. But it will be in the mail tomorrow, so if you hear anything, that's what's going on. Anything blows up at Situate?
No, because, uh, actually our secretary just retired, selectmen, so she'll get it tonight, tonight.
I want to say something, uh, we have a new town manager in Cohasset, permanent manager. And, uh, Mike Washington introduced me to him in about, uh, this is, it begins with the social, the tech. I never see the guy's ears and eyes perk right up. He's weird, so I always, I always have some nice reactions. He's a permanent town manager, the young guy is very nice, you know, I couldn't really work with him. We really work with him, whatever. It'll be easy to discuss.
Okay, so we have any requests for action? And what can we do? I'll give you that. We have Wood. We'll put him to.
Put him in.